To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the work session, January 5th, 2023, 9:30 a.m. I'll ask the Secretary of Treasury, call the roll.
Warren Parrish.
Present.
Ann Walker.
Here.
Edward J. Warner, Jr.
Present.
Secretary of Treasury, William Tellis, present. President Scott Haworth.
I am present.
We're all here.
All right.
It may continue.
Thank you very much. All right, so we have some discussions on. We'll jump right in. Trustee Welker, you have a discussion. I see you listed for me. Cox crabbing.
I do. Just going back to this should be, everybody should have a letter from Bay Constable Franks under your work session.
Thanks, Lisa. That's great. Thanks for printing that out. Okay, so as, it's probably like the third or fourth single sheet back in your packet. Bay Constable, I mean, Marine Patrol Officer Franks had a suggestion in lieu of, or perhaps in addition to, our proposed jump-ups with the crabbing poaching that's been going on in previous years. And what he was proposing was that there be a no-crabbing restriction from midnight until 5:00 a.m. And with that, the thought was that if anyone sees any crabbing happening during that time, it doesn't have to be Marine Patrol, it could be code enforcement, or it could be the police department as well. And we would have a broader umbrella with which to go after. This has been a serious problem in previous years, and we're just trying to get out in front of it and look for some alternatives. So that's something that I'd like to hear the feedback from all of you on. And then I also wanted to just relay what East Hampton is looking at, because they've had similar problems in Georgia Ga and in other areas. So do you want to weigh in on the restrictions?
Well, keep going.
So, East Hampton, the trustees have proposed this, and it's going to go before the town board. And what they're, what they're putting forth is that the charge will be upgraded to a misdemeanor, a misdemeanor, if there are no permits in possession. And also, if they're over limits with either no permit or shellfishing at night with no permits, it'll be an aggravated misdemeanor. The verbiage from their town attorney is coming to us, and it is going to be an ongoing discussion with East Hampton, but East Hampton's going after this very aggressively, and I just want us to do the same thing. I discussed with East Hampton, they did a sting operation last year, and that was quite productive, so I'm hopeful that we'll be able to do that this year in addition to going after the permitting aspect of it as well.
So, Mark, what do you think of that, on the legal side?
I see a couple of problems, one with involving the police and another with criminalizing the action, but I'd like to talk to the East Hampton town attorney, maybe bounce a few things off and see where we can go. Code enforcement could work, and definitely a code amendment, but enforcing it in justice court with a criminal violation may be problematic, but I'll look into all aspects of it and let you know.
What about the restriction from midnight to 5:00 a.m. with no crabbing?
That's discretion, I believe, you have. We should amend Section 12 of the code to reflect that first.
Yeah, that would be the first course of action.
And possibly, if you wish, a public hearing before that, because it's going to be a code amendment.
I think that would be productive. And secondly, I'd like you to look into the New York State DEC regulations as far as blue crabs, harvest limits, sizes, eggers, and what their enforcement capabilities are, being that we're going to do this on a town, our town, and I don't think the state would get involved as far as the time parameters, but the other stuff that I mentioned, they would definitely be involved. And once it's put in a car and it goes across the road, then it becomes a different type of a violation, you know? So, looking at what the East Hampton's doing and incorporating what we're going to do, and looking at the state, it might be the three entities kind of like co-mingling the regulations, but I would definitely start with the time limits of enforcement.
It must be town-wide.
I don't think you can do it in the rest of the town, because they would be considered migratory in Meacocks, not in Meacocks, but SAG. In Meacocks, it's in...
In other creeks.
In the other creeks, it'd be migratory, so that would fall specifically under...
Because that's what's going to happen, is that they're going to go to, they're going to go to Meacocks then at 11:30, 12:00. You're going to go to the, hit the...
Yeah, but the other ones, there's no regulations under the state statutes as far as timeline limits as for harvesting crustaceans like that. Maybe that's a conversation we should have with the state on a bigger, you know, if it's going to be a recreational, if it's going to be a recreational enforcement versus a commercial enforcement, because they view different, those two aspects differently.
I did have a conversation with one of the state officers when I was down on scene with the whale situation last week, and we were kind of, we touched on this, and it seems to be going on, obviously, at various different places on the island, that this pressure on, you know, illegally harvesting these crabs and taking over the limit and too small, it's a big problem that's not just, you know, obviously limited to our neck of the woods here, so they're dealing with it at various different places.
But at Meacocks, at Flying Point, if you put parking restrictions...
That's happened.
You know...
They already did that.
They already did that, so that would accrue people from parking there and camping out. But I also understand that they drop five or six people off in a van with buckets, and they let them go out harvest, they call up the van to come back, and then, you know, then they take the van off-site. So harvesting, setting a harvest day, time limit would be, on top of the parking, would be, I think, our best course of action.
Yeah, and I think that midnight, I think going up to midnight, because, I mean, obviously, everybody has fond memories of going crabbing with their families back in the day, as young children, but you figure by midnight, you know, that should be, you should be pretty much, you know...
What did your mother used to say? Nothing good happens after midnight?
Yeah, yeah, so I think, I think that's enough time for a family to go down there and have a, have a good time.
So, to...
And holding a public hearing, you'd also get the, you know...
The residents.
The residents, the recreational and commercial, both parties here to discuss, you know, their thoughts on it too, because I know commercially, you might be, I mean, not that I'm a commercial crabber at night, but there might be someone that does it, and it might, you know, you know, during the hearing process, be brought out whether they're in favor of it or not, so we might just do it as a recreational, you know, closure, but, you know, that would come through the public hearing process.
So, let's, let's plan on scheduling a public hearing.
So, no, let's, let's, yeah, I want to do that now.
Yeah, you got to do this at the next possible legal juncture.
So, our next meeting?
Yeah, we'll notice that we are going to have a public hearing on the following meeting.
So, we'll notice it June 26th, or whatever our next meeting is, and then we'll have the public hearing on July 19th, or whenever that next meeting is.
Depending upon how that goes, we can adopt.
So, does, does that still, if we, we can't, would we, because what I'm looking at is August, right?
Well, we could adopt if it goes well.
Yeah.
We could adopt after the public hearing, if the public hearing goes well, right?
We could have the resolution ready for adoption, and then if it goes well, and we see favorable to adopt it, then we could do it at that juncture.
If there's valid objection, then we could put that on hold, but if it's, if it's, everyone's like, hey, let's protect the resource, then...
Yeah.
Okay, so a resolution to be approved after the public hearing on that July meeting. And the, the height of the crabbing season is full moon in July and August, or predominantly, is it full and new moon in August?
It's, it's usually in August is when they, they shed, they shed on the full moons in July, and they usually become harvestable right after that, so that would be the timeframe. So, if we could get it done before the middle end of July, and have, have the, and we should have the Bay Constables either take part of the public hearing, or send a representative from the town enforcement end of it to hear their side of it too.
Okay.
Right? Right, Mark?
Yeah, I think that...
They could, could they do something written?
Who, who would you like to be present from the town?
Somebody that would be, you know, representing the Bay Constables, whether it's...
Supervisory or...
Yeah.
Supervisory, it could be a captain or superintendent.
I don't know what the procedure is now, but I'd just recommend reaching out to the town liaison to speak with them first.
Yeah, because I don't want to adopt...
Attempting to summon the Bay Constables.
Yeah, or you could get the details, Mark, in terms of, you seem to have a pretty strong opinion on, you know, so why don't you, why don't you do that legwork?
And this is a recommendation that was brought by, by one of the Bay Constables, so they probably already had internal conversations.
Correct, so if you could bring that to the forefront, Mark, I think that would be helpful.
Okay.
Is it pretty much good for the discussion here?
I think so, at least as far as the, the time restrictions, and then I will follow up with what East Hampton is doing and just keep us...
Keep us and Mark, obviously, since he's going to spearhead this.
Because that's a whole nother layer that involves town board, so that'll take a little longer, but I'm glad that we're working towards this.
Okay.
So, thank you, everyone.
So, you have another discussion on here?
I do.
MOA for the port-a-potty at Peters Pond and Sagaponic.
As you remember, the Sagaponic, so in our packet, there's a printed version of the MOA that Special Counsel Lombardo has drawn up. As you remember, the Sagaponic Village Mayor approached us asking for a port-a-potty to be installed at the Peters Pond Lane site. And they followed up after we had had a preliminary discussion and said, we'd like to put it in. And I just thought that we needed a bit more sort of guidance around this. So, in looking this over, I'd circulated it to the board, I believe, at least once or twice on a couple of previous occasions, but I wanted to address a couple things before we submit it to Sagaponic Village for their consideration. So, if you look at number one in the draft agreement, you'll see at the end portion of the first sentence, there's a incorporated Village of Sagaponic for an annual rent of $1 per year. That wasn't something we discussed, so if you could just...
You have to have consideration to have a contract, so $1 is a symbolic gesture of money change enhanced pension enforceable contract. That is customary. Would you agree, counsel?
Yeah, that's fine. We may wish to call it a license fee, but, but yes, that's totally fine.
So, do we strike, do we leave the term in rent, or do we strike it and put license fee? Does it get more complicated, Lisa, if we do license fee?
There's no, not much practical difference. It just, we want to make it look a bit more like a license, and also just include language on when it's revocable.
Okay, yes, that, that's a really important part of this. Okay, if you move on to number two, my impression had been that there was going to be landscape plantings in addition to a fence, but at this point, they're just proposing a fence. It will be on three sides, it will be fairly...
And just so you guys know, I believe that the back page has been left out.
Right.
So, Joe has it.
There's a page two that didn't make it on some copies.
Didn't make it on those.
Didn't make it on mine either. Lisa had it.
Does it describe the length of time the...
So, Lisa, can you see if you've...
Yes, five years, but every year has to be renewed, so that if there are issues or something, both parties can pull away from you.
Bill has it.
Paragraph eight.
Bill has it. I'll, I'll print them out.
That's what you wanted, Eddie, so that's what I put in.
So, what, because I'm concerned about that, because their proposal was for it just to be open-ended, that it would go in, it would stay in forever, and I think that we need some definite discussion at the end of each season, to see how things go, and to make sure that they're upholding their portion of things. Garbage had been a concern.
I did what Eddie asked.
It's a pilot port-a-potty project.
It's a pilot project. I said, I guess you don't have page two on yours, Anne, on the printout?
I don't. No, I have it in my email.
As a five-year agreement that happened to be renewed every year, basically, so that if there were issues, we could either discuss, renegotiate, or terminate.
Yeah, that's good.
It reads, "This agreement shall be for a period of one year from the date of this agreement's execution, and renewable at the party's consent for additional one-year periods for an additional four years. Said consent shall be considered granted upon the passage of a resolution by the trustees for that expressed purpose."
We have to take an affirmative action every year to renew it.
So, that's good. It doesn't automatically roll, because I'm just, and then the thing that is in there is another? Sure. The thing that was in there that I was concerned about was that the village has signage on it that says, "Call the village if there's any complaints, concerns, et cetera," and also that they have a weekly maintenance agreement with, for it to be emptied and cleaned. Yeah, so that's all in here. So, I think those were the main things, but I just want to make sure that there was nothing else that...
A week is going to be enough.
Not that going to be more than...
I had it as a minimum of once a week, so...
A minimum of once a week.
That we know that they're going to maintain it every week.
I believe that's how I set it up.
So, what do you suggest? Include, could we put in, including, so it reads now, "The village agrees that it's solely responsible for all costs associated with the public toilet, including but not limited to cost to obtain, install, rent, and maintain the public toilet." And then the second is, "It agrees to have the facility serviced by the owner of the public toilet no less than once a week." So, where would we insert monitoring?
I'm pretty sure if it gets filled, they're going to empty it more than once a week.
But who, like, checks on that? They have a schedule, but if it needs to be done more...
Probably they, they probably have village crews.
Maybe to get a complaint on their phone number, that's going to be on the side.
And I think I put a requirement for signage with a telephone number for complaints to the village.
I know Long Beach is, once a week.
And it's, it's good?
Yeah, once a week, they are there.
And if it's more, they'll figure it out as the program moves along.
Because they don't want to mess, because I think they'll lose the...
They're going to lose the business.
Lose the opportunity.
Oh, we're going to get all kinds of phone calls. I mean, it's, you know...
We get all kinds of phone calls now.
We do anyway.
We're trying to make the program successful.
Right, yeah, and that's why going through all these steps, I think, will be helpful.
Collaboration on the most basic human needs here.
I didn't put that type of language, but I can, if you want something...
Yeah, if they don't, if the family's not maintaining it, we can revoke it at any time.
I think that might be an important part of things, because otherwise, it goes through the end of the year, so I think that's, yeah, to be added.
I'll add it on.
And then, if it could be reviewed before it's submitted to the village, that would be good. Okay, does anybody else have any concerns or thoughts about this?
I think that covers pretty much what we discussed.
Okay.
I sent it to everybody.
All right, so we're just adding that. Thanks, Bill.
Lisa, you want that one back or...
Yeah.
Because I made, I made notes.
Did you make notes?
I made notes for myself.
All right, so that concludes the MOA discussion.
Yes.
Port-a-potty for Peters Pond.
Okay, thank you.
So, when do we anticipate the draft going to the village?
Uh, tomorrow.
No, no, to me first, and then, and then to the village.
Okay, thanks, Joe.
Okay.
All right, let's go right into the general permit applications for determination. Susan Baker, 26 Bonita, NIC E K R Shores is here, I would assume, representing that. Ready for your presentation, Agina?
Not really.
Not really?
I'm exhausted.
Huh?
I'm exhausted.
You're exhausted?
It's a long weekend.
Got to bring your A-game here.
Long weekend.
Still horse, it's time to head.
I know. That's a horse weekend.
All right, sign in and state your name.
Agina Richton, D K R Shores, here to represent Susan Baker. It is 26 Bonita Road, East Quogue. This is in the Schinacoch Shores development. It's a pretty typical standard bulkhead reconstruction. The bulkhead to the north is about 12 inches higher, so she's asking for a height raise to match that bulkhead.
Right, which is pretty much...
It's standard. Also, we included rock with beech grass buffer, and the existing bulkhead not only has a lot of sinkholes and very dangerous right now, but there is concrete slabs with boat davits that will be removed. So, all in all, the project will be an improvement to the site. There's also a step-down we're proposing to close off.
So, is there lawn right up to the bulkhead at this point?
Well, it's, you could say it's lawn, but it's, there's sinkholes going up to the bulkhead that was lawn.
Right, but there's no buffer there now?
Correct.
Okay. And how long is the linear footage of the bulkhead?
Seventy-five. All the lots in there are seventy-five wide, so they're all standard. So, it's, it's a good improvement to the site.
You guys okay?
You all right?
Going on in there.
Something, I hope it's just something that...
Substantial improvement to the site.
Yes. Any other questions?
I think I still owe you, owe you plans that are stamped on this one.
Yeah, well, if it goes...
Yes, we need stamp plans.
Right. Yeah.
Okay. So, I'll get on that. I'll just send the cat file out.
Yeah, because it has to go through that step before it could go anywhere.
Okay.
Do the buzzer thing while she's here?
Yes.
Do you want to do the other one?
132 Point Road, West Hampton Beach.
It's a proposed dock, it's a small dock, very similar to the dock to the east, but also within blue book regulations as far as distance to the property line, extended property line.
James, do you need all blue book regulations?
It appears so, you know, they're 20 feet off the property line, and they're two and a half feet of water, so.
There's a question about the...
Oh, the piling, yeah.
You have nine-inch butt piles? I think the blue book only requires...
Eights.
Eight.
Okay, I mean, I can, I can change that, but generally, what happens is, these piles are not milled exactly at eight, so they do vary, so sometimes one side is, because the tree is like that, sometimes the tree is a little wider than eight by the time they're milled down. So, I always kind of include that, because I can't control the consistency of them milling these lumber.
They don't mill, they just cut them down and strip the bark.
Yeah.
I think that's...
They're going to end up being eight, but I like to include it, because there's just a hair difference sometimes.
I, I think in this area, previously, we have requested that the floating dock come out because of icing.
Seasonal floating dock.
Yes, it will be seasonal there. There's a lot of ice jacking in that area, so the ramp and the float will come out.
Is that in, is that in the permit now? Is that in the application now?
No, we need an app, a cover sheet.
I could do that.
It'll get ruined.
Actually, actually, it is. It says seasonal, actually, on the plan.
Okay.
Yeah, but we want it on the...
But I could put it on the...
As the character of work or a special condition, so that way...
No, it's in the description.
It should be in the description.
Get it all to match, just get everything to match, so it's clear.
Oh, it actually does say ramp and float to be stored seasonally in an upland location.
On the plans, okay.
It's actually in the description.
Okay.
She's good.
Okay.
But yes, good point, brought it up.
And these plans are stamped?
Yes.
So, we can move ahead to advance them.
Okay, thank you.
All right, that's all, that's all you have with us today, right? All right, so then I have Enviro permits for 19 Schinacoch Road LLC.
Good morning, all.
Good morning, Clay.
Okay, today, I'm a little hearing impaired, accident with my hearing aid.
I'm sorry to hear that.
A good one, and it didn't survive. And I could have went to the doctor today, but I'm here, but I'll go tomorrow.
Representing your...
Happy you're here.
Please sign in and state your name for the record.
Okay. Clay Colfield, Enviro permits, I'm here representing Dave McWilliams for 19 Schinacoch Road Enterprise LLC.
Okay, so you're asking for a replacement of an existing 75-foot bulkhead Navy-style vinyl? You're asking for 18 inches and a beach staircase, two eight-foot returns, and five cubic yards of clean fill landward, and replant. You're going to use all non-treated material?
Right. Yes, we are asking for that. He also currently has a building permit with the town to replace the house. The house has been razed, and he wants to put this in before he starts on the house, which makes sense.
So, yeah, but the question is just on the 18, we're not sure that that makes sense. The elevation, when you kind of get on site, especially with the house being razed relative to its relationship to the adjoining properties, I'm not sure. I don't know, can you take, can you take a closer look at that?
Yes, the general tendency with all DEC permits is to raise the elevation, to cut down the amount of water that flows in to the higher, to the properties, to the roads, and it's their way of grazing up the entire shoreline of the state of New York to prevent flooding to some degree. So, this, this is included in all DEC permits.
Right, we recognize that, but we always, we always look at the site-specific conditions to the area, so what you're going to have to do, Clay, is you're going to have to get us a number?
Well, you give me the number.
Well, why don't we, well, I want to, since you're raising the house and you've got a whole plan going on, I'd rather collaboratively work with you on what's going to make best sense for that site, because the 18 may, you know, may create some, some issues, especially with only bringing in that small amount of fill and the adjoining properties. So, I think maybe to do the proper job, you and I can meet on site, and maybe we'll do a little homework on this, so we get, we get it right for the clients, if you want.
The second issue, which I haven't done yet, considering what you may have come up with this, with the 18 inches, is I haven't got the plans stamped yet, and I won't stamp them until you tell me what the acceptable elevation would be.
So, why don't you take a look at your schedule, get yourself squared away, obviously, and then you and I can meet on site, and...
What days are you free?
It varies.
You can talk about that offline.
Yeah, yeah, it varies, so you can get ahold of me, and we'll, we'll see what works. You have my cell number.
Sounds good.
All right.
Otherwise, it's acceptable?
He just says replant. What are you putting...
I can't hear you.
What are you putting against the plants? What plants are you going to place? You just say replant.
Yeah, you just have to get a better feel, you know, get a better description of the...
I'll give you new plants, yes. Is that what you're saying?
Make, you know, no, make a better vegetation plan, that way it's clear.
Oh, oh, yeah, I can do that. We can increase the vegetation and stuff like that.
Right, so after you, right, so after you set the limit to where, on the height that makes sense, just we'll provide some good planting plan so that the board knows.
And show them on the application.
Right, exactly.
Yes, I will.
But the real discussion is about the height of the bulkhead and the possible raise.
We'll get together on that. And I'll, I'll be hearing better then.
Right, so catch me, we're going to hold it pending a site visit, and then catch me off, you know, we'll make...
That would be the only bulkhead in that whole area that was elevated that much.
Yeah, well, I know, that's why I, I think we need to get down there and take a look at the adjoining properties, especially with the elevation that's happening to the house coming up, and, and see what's going to make sense there, so...
Because I think that whole area is going to be raised.
Well, well, let's, let's get on site, take a look at this, the topography, and figure out what's going to, what's going to make sense, especially since the houses are coming up.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
All right, so we're going to hold that. Next one that I have is a First Coastal for Three Harbor. Alright, so we're gonna hold that. Next one that I have is a First Coastal for Three Harbor. Three Harbor Lane in East Quogue. Sounds like Billy Mack, and he's here. He's got all his files, he's prepared. I like you. So, this one we've been working on for a while, right?
Yes, Billy Mack, First Coastal.
How are you doing?
Very good, how's it?
Right, James, we've been working on this one for a while?
I believe so, yes.
Yes. This is...
Two hundred and fifty-one feet of existing bulkhead.
Yes.
They reduced it to nine inches.
Right, I think that was the...
That was the big issue.
The big issue was getting the elevation set, which I think you've done.
Yep, we did that and stamp plans.
And stamp plans.
I think you, you...
Oh, yeah, 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 there is. I met with the owner over the weekend. They were, you know, hemming and hawing about the nine inches, but I got him on that. They did want to add a tie-off pile. I'm gonna draw it right here and see if you guys have an opinion of objection.
Say it again, tile pile?
Tie-off pile.
Oh, tie-off.
Yeah, so his boat extends out past this dock, this little slip, and he wanted to put a tie-off pile in there just to secure it a little easier.
How far off you got?
It's about six feet off. It's definitely well inside this little shadow.
Yeah, the little pier line that's there with the creative thing.
What's the address of this again?
One...
Number three.
Three Harbor Lane.
Yeah. Yeah, he's got a boat slip there. There's a guy with a boat left and a big house over here.
So, it would be off the little dock.
Yeah, off the little slip, and yes, off.
And off the little dock.
It's not a dock, it's just a, it's a deck. It's in the bulkhead, so it's off the bulkhead about six feet. Yeah, it's, it's a little pier.
Okay.
It doesn't go, it won't be as far out as his boat is.
Right.
But it will...
It'd be inside of the, this...
It's gotta be inside of that pier.
Inside of the eastern edge or the northern edge.
Right.
Bulkhead.
Right.
So, you, right, so you have to, just, you gotta imagine your plans.
Yeah, we meant the plans. We'll send those to you. Just wanted to make sure you guys didn't have any objection.
It's gotta definitely stay inside the pier.
So, this is two hundred and fifty-one linear feet of bulkhead?
Yeah.
Where do we stand with the buffer?
Buffer is all included. It's ten foot and it's vegetated.
Okay, the whole way?
Yeah, the whole way. There are some walkways that are being replaced, but, yeah.
Maybe that's around the dugout canal where you get in on and off the boat, sort of.
Exactly. And they're minimal. They're not, you know. Yeah, there's just ten-foot buffer around the entire slip and, and bulkhead.
And no fertilize? Is all that language in there? No fertilize and just irrigate for the first, and native plantings?
Native plantings, be precise, yeah.
That's the only thing that was living at all of this.
Andrew said that you're handing in the copies of those. He said he will be handing them.
Do I have that?
No, if you have them or not, or...
Right here.
What did you say?
It looked like you were prepared when you walked in.
He's prepared. Andrew has his back.
Because if they're stamped, you guys can just, you know, move to the next one if you...
Does he include the piling in it?
With the piling.
Oh.
He said in the email, so.
He put the piling on already?
Yeah, he did.
That's what, that's what Andrew said in his email this weekend.
Party going on over here.
All right. Do you have everything you need, James?
He's looking.
And you can just stay right there because we got twenty-seven Leeward next.
Couple more, okay.
Boy, I had to go after that.
It is right, not noted on this plan.
Yeah, we're gonna need that on the plan.
Yeah.
Can you have him just tweak it and...
Yeah. Yeah, we can hold this over.
Well, we, no. If that's the only thing, it could go and you just...
Yeah, that's the only...
Yeah, we just need the new plans.
Yeah, just get a new plan.
And it'll go on for the next work.
Correct. Can you do that?
Good, yep, yep. Sorry. I thought it was there.
Do you want to hand these in or just keep those?
No, I'll keep them and make sure you get the right ones.
Alright. You good, James?
Yep.
Thank you, James.
Now, don't, don't run away.
Twenty-seven Leeward?
Twenty-seven Leeward Associates LLC.
Okay.
Twenty-seven Leeward Lane in Quogue. This is another one I believe we've been working on for...
We did talk about this one as well.
Right.
And I think we reduced the elevation also to nine inches.
So, this one here, I think you've looked at this.
Yeah, and this is a very simple, straight dock with a slip in it. And we also have the ten-foot buffer. This would be loose stone as a buffer, is what they're proposing.
Why?
When this bulkhead gets overtopped, it's got some current to it.
Scours out.
It's like a little bit of a scour pad, it's really...
What size is the bluestone gonna be?
It'll be native stone.
Yeah, native stone, not bluestone.
What size?
Oh, it'll, it'll be like...
See, you see, it's commensurate with what's there now. So, you have this...
You're gonna put crackstone or you're gonna put...
Which one?
No, no, here, no, no, here.
Like around native.
Yeah, this is what's there now. So, so relative to this location...
This one was discussed and you brought it back down, right?
To nine inches, yeah.
Yeah, no, we've done this, but relative to this location, this is, you know, they're being better stewards than some of the other properties that are there, so, you know. I think that you're playing ball here. You've done what we've asked you to do.
Okay.
In my opinion.
Could we consider the possibility of planting and then, of planting beech grass and then using the stone on top of or intermingled?
I could, I could suggest that to them. They were keen on the idea that the stone was there in the past and they thought that that held up to the current better. You know, and it's odd that there's not any...
You can see they're pushed back here in Quogue.
No, I know where it is.
Yeah, you can see that they're...
Yeah, it's right by coastline.
Right, they're pushed back. Other properties have bright green grass right up to the water. This one's stepped off to kind of, you know...
Give a buffer.
Give a buffer there, so it is working, you know.
Is it ten feet, though, at present?
It will be ten feet.
Right.
It's not ten feet.
No, it's, it's, it's less, but they're gonna be more.
I'm just thinking in terms of overtopping, scouring the rhizomes of the beech grass. Make a, will make a web beneath that stone, so, you know, it just will fortify that a bit. I mean, it's worth an ask or consideration in the future.
Yeah, I brought it up with them. They liked the idea of the stone, so I didn't know where to go with that.
I mean, it's compliant with Blue Book and they did, you know. I think you've pretty much checked the boxes. I mean, you know, would native vegetation be better? Absolutely, it would be better.
If you went like Cape American beech grass, you'd cut down on the likelihood of spreading, spraying round up on these stones to kill the invasive species that'll happen there. That's my only thought, you know.
I agree.
That, I could see a benefit from that.
Yeah, I mean, usually, I mean, it's a non-treated zone. They're not allowed to do anything.
Exactly, technically not supposed to.
Right.
It's not a piece of grass or...
Okay. Got the gardener weed in it, maybe.
All right.
Right? You know what, they've, they've met the Blue Book, so I mean, I think, you know, yeah, native vegetation would be good, but it's not bad. I mean, you're, you're pushed back. Other properties, when I ride through there, are right on the water and they're...
I can implore them to, to do something, you know, I get it.
You can ask them.
I can ask them. I mean, what do you... I gotta get them to do that.
So, that one would be much appreciated. What do you suggest? You wanna hold it? You wanna have another conversation?
No, I'd rather, they're anxious to move this along. So, if it's compliant and you guys think it'll move along, then, then happy to do that. I will bring it up as a side note, for sure.
If you send them a letter, just put a copy to our office that you hit correspondence with them, okay?
Okay. That's easy.
All right.
So, we're letting the stone fly?
No.
For now.
Hey, hey, not.
You know, it's a tough, that's a tough area in the village of Quogue.
We need stamp plans, so the plans will...
But he's gonna send them a letter asking, asking, and I ask for a copy for our office, so...
Yeah, we do need stamp plans. If I can get them, convince them, I mean, it's their option. You know, to, to do that, then I'll encourage them.
Only because then they're setting example for all the properties around them of what to do?
One thing I do like about the stone is that, and I've seen this in the past, it's easier, it's harder to take the stone out and replace it with sod in the future, which I've seen that.
Yes.
Well, will you, yeah, so just take a boat ride?
Exactly.
Right, that's what I'm saying. It's like, they've been good stewards of pushing it back and using stones, and now they're gonna push back even farther. So, they're working with the elevation, they're working with all the other stuff, and it's like it is compliant, so it's not a bad plan, it's a good plan.
Yeah, I know what you're...
So, is, is it always nicer to see native vegetation? Sure it is, but you are, you are...
Compliant.
It's not about being nicer to see vegetation, native vegetation. It's about that it's a true benefit for our marine environment.
It absolutely is, but just not in our regulations, right?
I'll stress that, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
And with that whole thing, it's like they have to be good stewards of those plantings because in a lot of cases, you're at the table here and you implore the plantings and then you go back there and they're dead. They're not being taken care of or maintained and then we've...
Or cut.
Or...
Or cut or mowed.
You know, we've got something that's, you know, not working and, and now you got an issue. Whereas here, you're looking at a property that is not right up to the bulkhead with green. They've been good stewards of staying off of the waterway. They're looking to stay a little farther off, takes, take more pressure off, so it's, it's still all in all.
Just think of your four-edgemine drive now.
A good plan. Alright, it's up to you, I'm, I'm good with this. You go with this?
I'm good with this.
You ready, Bill?
Uh, sure, we're going to the next one. Okay, you guys got me back to back here.
Yeah.
You got plenty of them.
I guess so.
You're a busy guy.
Four-edgemine drive, Southampton LLC. Reconstruct in place, ninety feet of existing bulkhead. Increase top elevation by eighteen inches. Remove existing four-by-sixty ramp float dock. Replace with a four-by-seventy-one catwalk with a three-by-twelve ramp down to a six-by-twenty float. Eight-inch diameter piles to a...
Yeah.
What do you got to say about that?
Uh, so this is a, a very low bulkhead adjacent to a property that has a high bulkhead. The bulkhead adjacent to it is higher than eighteen inches, so we're proposing to go up at least eighteen inches.
Just to match that one.
Just to get a, a little bit higher.
What do you mean the bulkhead to the adjacent property?
The south is a good twenty-four inches higher than the bulkhead that exists here.
Is that a permitted bulkhead?
Uh, yeah.
Yes.
Yep. This is a very old bulkhead.
Yeah, I think this was originally built in as a, we can...
Yeah. And it's functional, it's doing an okay job. It gets overtop quite a bit. There's also a existing and permitted dock there that is mostly made out of floating. It's all floating material except for the, the ramp that leads to it from the bulkhead. We're thinking about replacing that with more compliant dock elevated with through flow and a traditional float single six-by-twenty float with a ramp out at the end. There's adequate depth, it's inside the pier line, and it, it'll allow much more, you know, safer and less destructive of boating use.
Is this a woolly pond?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The north end is not bulkhead.
It's one of the few docks that are left there that are all floating. Most all the old floating docks that were just floating docks have been upgraded since, and this is one of the last ones. But oddly, that had a permit on it. I think it was nineteen ninety, so. But yeah, this is...
So, you're gonna put a compliant catwalk with light penetrating decking?
Exactly. Bring it out to two and a half feet of water, which we're...
What a depth should be, you know, pretty, pretty deep there. Because most of it's dredged.
Yeah, it drops off pretty quickly. And we can meet that pier line, we can meet the qualifications of the dock well before the pier line. And, yeah, pretty, you know...
So...
Nice improvement, but...
The rise in elevation, though, of the bulkhead? What, the property to the north?
Yes.
What's the height of that bulkhead?
There's no bulkhead on that side.
Yeah, there's no bulkhead on the north.
Right. Ten-thirty will break for James.
Yeah, to put the rekan wall.
So, that, that in my, there, is there anything on that property or is it...
No, nothing on that property.
So, that's a problem.
As you can see in that one picture, the height of the bulkhead next door, it's definitely higher.
Right, but that's not the property I'm talking about. I'm talking about the property on the other side, so...
Yeah, they do not have a bulkhead. It's the same owner. Yeah, they do not have a bulkhead. It's the same owner. He likes, you know-
So when you say it's the same owner, this, the sub, the number-
This property owner right here owns the property also to the north.
So number four owns the one to the north.
So family compound.
Yeah, exactly.
And it's a nice wetland right in front of the floor.
Yeah, there's a significant wetland there.
Yeah, and it's survived there for quite some time. I don't think the bulkhead has any impact to it at all. So this is just for flood protection for the existing house.
Right, but if it goes up eighteen inches, what's that gonna do to the property?
Is it nine inches?
Yeah.
Oh, Rashid said nine inches.
Okay, you're right.
Okay.
I think we have it already.
Because we actually talked about this before. We compromised on nine inches.
So I'm concerned, sorry.
I was reading the whole cover sheet. I wanted to see if you were gonna-
Clearly, I'm not.
So I'm concerned if we-
Same, I've got files, but nothing else.
So I'm concerned, even if we're only raising the bulkhead on the number four, nine inches, how is that gonna affect a really healthy wetland and a healthy shoreline for, although it may be the same owner at this point? What about going forward?
Um, good question. I, I don't, I know that this bulkhead's been there for quite some time and it, there's been no noticeable impact from this bulkhead on the wetlands because they're thriving even in front of this bulkhead. I think going up the nine inches, as was negotiated previously, is a minimal amount to just try to help the flooding on the main property, the upland. I don't think it's gonna have any impact on the adjacent property wetlands either. They've existed there for a long time with that bulkhead for a very long time and they seem to be very healthy.
And he's not, he's not raised, he's not really raising the property behind the bulkhead?
No. Yeah.
So-
Basically, just for the waves.
So, when, can we see the, um, yeah, the plan, the cross section? So, at the end of the bulkhead, there's no return?
There is a return. There's a ten-foot return.
Okay. So, is there, so when it floods, it's gonna come in from the property to the north and it's gonna go around that return?
And that property to the north has historically been flooded.
Okay.
So I don't think anything's gonna change on that.
But then when it recedes and it comes off the subject property,
He might add it.
It's gonna scour, it's gonna scour the property to the north. That's what I'm concerned about with the healthy wetland.
Very frequently. Almost every spring high, it's getting flooded and exiting.
Understood, right.
There's no noticeable scour.
But with a nine-inch elevation, that's significant. So what, is there anything that can be done on that northern side in terms of-
But you're all on a wetland, so you'd be doing it.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's all wetlands there.
So wetlands, that breaks it down. That's, actually, you might have less water because if you go up nine inches, that's gonna stop some of the wave action.
It'll stop most of the springs, spring high tides at least, yeah.
If you end up putting some weed poles in it, like we did scuppers, what we did on in Colesfront, that has bulkhead.
Yeah, but you're raising the bulkhead nine inches. Are you gonna raise the elevation behind the bulkhead at all?
Well, it'll slope down.
Are you bringing in fill?
Uh, no, we're not. I, I don't think there is proposed fill.
Because if you did bring in a little bit of fill, then it wouldn't fill it-
Yes, there is. Ten yards.
Yeah, so you're, you're raising the bulkhead, you're raising the property behind it, so the flooding is not gonna be as much. So there's not gonna be as much water emptying into that northerly wetlands area.
Plus a four-inch lip.
Yeah, plus a four-inch lip, so it would be five inches behind the bulkhead.
Right, so it's actually-
You, you're really not-
Five-inch rise.
Yeah.
It's a Willie Pond, the wave fetch is very minimal. I mean, it would be a southwesterly wind that you would have any, you know, wave energy.
Yep.
And that wetlands is gonna absorb all of that, you know, wave action, so.
As will the beach grass.
Yeah, so I, I don't see it being negatively impacting the area. If it was like three miles of wave, you know, like a-
If you were asking for eighteen, it would be a different story.
Yeah.
That's what we said. I think me and Ed, we both settled on nine.
I, I think it would, I, I don't think it's gonna make that big of a difference in there. If you went to eighteen inches, then you're gonna have a little bit of refraction off the bulkhead. But eighteen, uh, eight, nine inches is, is, is pretty minimal. With fill, it's gonna not be that much flooding, so I don't think you're gonna get the scouring where you're gonna, you know, have it-
That's the, that wetland on the corner holds a lot of stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
Nice help you on.
No, I don't-
You know, it may even minimize the, uh, the water that's rushing out of it after, because it'll minimize the floods.
It's gonna act as a baffle. This is all wetlands there. You don't have, you know, short grass. It's Frank Mites.
Move it forward?
I'm okay with it the way it's proposed.
Justice, Justice Parrish?
I'm fine.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Do you need the stand plans? Yeah, stand plans, right.
Next one I got for you, I guess it, more or less.
I think I have.
You have one, you have this, we have three.
Do you want, don't take a break for me for a while?
We're gonna have to take a break in a few minutes. We have a little confidential discussion. We have to have it ten thirty.
Six oh six Montauk Highway?
You wanna do six oh six? Can we do that in ten minutes?
Okay.
I think so. Okay, six oh six, do you have that here?
I do.
Uh, six oh six Montauk Highway Watermill. So this is a property right on Montauk Highway that is on Mill Creek. It's just over the bridge that goes from Mill Creek to Mill Pond, I mean, to Me Cox Bay. It's, the proposal is for a two hundred and ten foot bulkhead to be increased by eighteen inches with a ten-foot wide buffer planted with beach grass. The one, um, benefit of this proposal is it's lawn right up to the edge of the bulkhead right now. So with the buffer, I would like to see there be language in here that it's no mow, no fertilize or, um, in addition to the beach grass. However, I'm concerned about an eighteen-inch rise. If you pull up the aerial, I looked, I went over and looked from the watermill, the watermill, like the actual watermill, looking back over to this property and the properties on, on both sides of it do not have bulkhead. They have some sort of rock or just native plantings. This is a three hundred foot wide tributary off of Mill Pond. Uh, there's no wave fetch here. The flooding that occurs here is minimal at best. I, the bay is quite high right now because we are precluded from opening it. I took pictures of the height of the bay on the bulkhead at this point and it's probably about six to eight inches from the top with the high bay. So I don't see the need to elevate it eighteen inches. So in my opinion, it should be in kind, in place with no elevation increase, but I'm open to discussion.
Okay. Other benefit is this is a creosote bulkhead, so we're happy to get that material out. I kind of agree with Ann. I think that it doesn't need to go eighteen inches. And I'd be willing to convince the property owner to do something less.
So let's put it on hold.
Put it on hold.
You can go back and look at this site.
Well, if we, I'd like to keep moving it. If I, if you guys are good with me halving that to nine inches, how do you guys feel?
I don't agree with that.
Yeah, I mean, you, you would prefer it at level. Like, I, I get that.
I mean, I took pictures of it, Billy, so-
Yeah.
I should've gone over to the watermill to take better pictures, but you can see from these pictures that, I mean, you can see where it is on, on the boat.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know excessive high ponds, it does, you know, elevations, it, it does get overtopped. So I, you know, I'm-
The bay, right now, the bay is like practically at the opening line and with our permit now being in place in Me Cox, without, with the exception of plover season, we're able to open now in a much more managed,
Yeah.
you know, more, a better manner, so.
What is the topography or elevation change from the house to the bulkhead?
It grades up. It slopes down to the-
Whichever you're looking at it, yeah.
Is it, is it a foot over twenty feet or is it two feet over twenty feet?
It's probably two feet.
Do you have the other permits in place?
Uh-
Because if you, if you don't have the other permits in place, I think for the amount of money-
I don't know the answer to that.
But for the amount of money that's being spent here and for the duration of time that the structure's gonna be there, I, I really think that you need to like, you need to take another look at this. That way, if there is something that's warranted, is, there's some sensibility to it as opposed to just negotiating indiscriminately.
No, I know that, you know, I, I'm-
You see, you know, you know-
I don't see any other permits that have been listed here.
So why don't you, why don't you take another look at this site on specifics?
So at least a six-inch increase to hold the runoff back, I mean, would be-
When the pond is high, high.
Would be, you know, would be good, but I mean, eighteen inches, that's a lot.
Yeah.
So, it's very, I can go back and take these pictures. So at this point, it's six to eight inches. The water level is six to eight inches down on the, on the bulkhead and this is a high bay. So if you're seeing six inches on top of that, when do you do pictures this morning?
No, when are you planning on letting the pond again?
As soon as we can.
Wait, it's plover season, so we're waiting on authorization.
Well, my thought is that I know it'll come up more. Maybe I can, you know, look at it again.
Yeah, but with six inches, you're only gonna have a two-inch increase behind it and you're gonna have a four-inch lip, which just doesn't have to slow the runoff going into the, you know, creek there.
However, a buffer works in the same way.
Yeah, but it's, but it's also pitched too, so you gotta, I'm trying to-
Lock area, get a heavy rain.
Yeah, it's-
All right, why don't you go-
I'll go back.
You, you go back. Let's, let's, let's get some, spend, spend a lot of money and a lot of time on this.
It hits the opening mark.
Let's, let's, let's try and do a good job.
Good, good.
Um, folks-
All right, well, let's get that measurement so we can incorporate it in this.
I think it's ten thirty. I think we had a planned discussion for confidential legal advice.
We're holding this?
It's-
Thanks.
Thank you, Billy.
I think we need to take a break.
Where are you going?
How long is it gonna be?
Uh, I don't see it being any more than twenty to thirty minutes.
So this is just a pause?
Just a pause, um, and then we're gonna have to come back.
If you, if, Scott, if you're pausing for exec, then just state that on the record and take the vote to enter into-
Yeah, I'm gonna do that. Charles, you done asking questions?
Um, yes, I just need to know what's going on.
We're gonna, we're gonna motion to take a pause in our meeting for the purposes of the board to receive some scheduled confidential legal information and advice and then we'll come back into work session once that's done. Should not be a long discussion.
Thank you, everybody. Sorry.
Is there a second for that?
Second.
Second, are we all in favor?
All right.
Okay, so-
Sorry for your time.
We'll, we have to, we have to have a conversation and then we'll come back into session as quickly as we can, so.
Thanks for understanding.
Take your, take your stuff with you.
Gavel.
Oh, yes.
Thanks, Charles.
Second, trustee Pell, all in favor?
All right.
Okay, let's go back to work session.
Hey, Rob, come on up here.
Right now?
Yep, you're up. Three seventy-three Millstone North Sea, is that you? No, it's not you.
It's not you.
It's the signs.
It's Jim.
It's Jim Walker.
I'll do James Farm.
That's what happens when you have bifocals on. Wait, did Jim stay or did he leave?
He was impressed with what we did, Scott.
James, is Jim out there?
He's on his way.
Jim is?
Who?
No, no. It's James. Is Jim Walker out there?
No, I only have him as his number.
Let's, let's do National Golf.
Jim, Jim had to leave.
Get eleven o'clock, Eddie?
Yeah, eleven o'clock, yeah.
You want to do?
All right.
So he's on hold.
All right.
Let's do National Golf Links, three oh, three oh eight Zibonic Inlet Road, Tuckahoe.
Thanks, Charles.
JMO.
J O M O. Come on up.
Wait, Rob said he had eleven o'clock meeting.
Rob said he had eleven, no.
Who isn't eleven o'clock?
We got JMO right here.
Yes.
Jim Walker.
Yeah, I think somebody else does too, though. We just have to ask him.
All right. Good, how's everyone doing?
Oh, good. Application proposed to construct a four by six ramp leading to a four by eighty-five foot thick stock utilized by a through-flow deckin, glade to marsh to a three by twelve ramp to a six by forty float. Uh, this is National Golf Course. Hey, James, could you do an overhead shot of this, please? Met with him a few times down at the location.
So where exactly is the location? Because there's a, there's a-
This.
Right, but where's the proposed location?
It's gonna be back in the corner there.
Let me pull up the plan here.
Yeah.
So there's-
About right there.
Right there.
Deteriorated bulkhead there now.
The, the whole entire shoreline has deteriorated bulkhead.
Um, the deteriorated bulkhead, I would not, I would just cut it down. I would not leave, take it out because it actually holds it from falling in. It's like a breakwater in there.
Yeah, we got over that on the site there.
Yeah, and there's a huge hole in there. They won't put it in on. If they go over, I think about forty feet, I think we pasted out, is that's where you're gonna put the dock?
So back in the day-
There was a marina there.
There were docks here. There's a significant current that flows through here.
No, not here. This is kinda like a-
This is in the belly?
Yeah, this is kinda like, yeah, this is kind of like a calm area there.
But there is, there is a current like Ann says that goes, goes through there. And that's one of its really reason, important to keep that old bulkhead there. That's like a low cell bulkhead.
Just cut it, just cut it down then?
Yeah. There's some stuff in the water there where I found clamming. But it's mostly a little bit to the east of where that dock is.
Okay.
So this is a heavily used recreational? If, if you go back to the, the aerial, I mean, this area is heavily used. I, I think perhaps that this has to be a public hearing. Because if you go down there practically any day, there are people fishing, there're, you know, fuckers.
Not fishing, they're not fishing where that is.
No, but along, you're right, along that area.
Yeah, they don't go fishing on the bulkhead because they're not allowed on the bulkhead. They start up by the north end of that bulkhead and walk north about on the beach. What that area is used for, you see people with the, um, doing yoga on the-
On a mattress?
On the stand-up boards and, you know, power boards.
Is that gonna affect, is this gonna affect any of that because people are putting docks all over them?
I think, I think that, um, this is a significant change in this landscape and in the use.
Historically, there had, there had been two docks.
Further along.
There was docks there many years ago.
Right, but, I mean, back in the nineteen, early nineteen hundreds, there were for sure, but, and then more recently.
They said it was a huge mooring area too for very large sailboats back in the-
Back in the day.
Yeah. Two, two centuries, late eighteen hundreds, early nineteen. We're not getting out that far, right? We're gonna get to the two and a half, the standard. Try to keep it tight. Right, so we, so sailboats are, you know, they're still gonna be able to do all that, but-
Looks like they're a little further than two and a half.
Well, where are we at blue book regulation wise here?
And also it's four, it's forty foot where it should be twenty foot.
All right, so you can go with a much shorter dock there.
Right, so you, you-
Keep it inside that little dugout?
So you gotta clip this to the blue book regulation of things that we customarily would approve, not, uh-
See, the reason they wanna deal with, um, because I was gonna ask to cut it down to two docks or three docks there and the reason they said they, for the members who are paying for this, they come over and, um-
I think there should be a-
Is it gonna be a commercial dock?
No, it's just for members to come over, play a round of golf, get on the boat and go home.
So it's, it's a six by twenty float or is it?
I put in a six by four hoping, yeah.
Yeah, so if it's a-
To accommodate, you know, the bigger the float, the more boat, the more-
Yeah, it'd be a six by twenty.
Why is it different than any other thing we put in Shinnacock Bay or anywhere else where people are kayaking and clamming and all the other stuff?
Yeah, I mean, to be consistent, it would be a six by twenty float to two and a half feet of water. And if you, and if you put it far enough off that eastern shore, you could type out some on both sides of it. And there's not a lot of current in there, only on the first part of rising.
But with that, with that bulkhead so close over there, you know.
We'd have to move it over a little bit if you're gonna use both sides of it.
Yeah, I mean, well, what's the distance? Maybe it's plenty, plenty there, but it gives it a little bit of shelter is what I'm saying. So you may not have to move it, but you don't, uh-
Because we actually also talked about putting it against the bulkhead. But this, this was a little bit better idea because there's more water. Because along the bulkhead, it kinda like-
It's pretty shallow now.
Right, so, so where you-
It used to be very deep there, but it's no longer.
But where you've cited this, you've already taken this into consideration, correct?
Yeah. It's been, we've spent a lot, a lot of time-
A lot of time, so you've, you've taken it into careful consideration of where you've cited this. I think the issue is the length, right?
Length and the depth of water.
I think we're, I think we're a hundred feet from mean high water.
No, but you gotta bring it back to six, uh, two point five.
We only go to two point five.
You're at four, you're at four nine, it looks like.
Right, so you, you gotta just, you gotta bring it back to what we customarily permit.
Which would be half the distance that's proposed.
Right, so once you cut it back to the size and you, you, you're pulling it in, it, it's, it's no different than any of the other approvable structures, right? I think that's really where you need to be.
Is this land, is it, what is it? Is it commercial land or is it residential?
Residential.
So it's residential, you can only have, Scott's right, you can only have a twenty by forty, I mean, twenty, six by twenty.
Okay.
If it was, if it was commercial, part of the, of the golf course, then you could say it's a commercial application where you can, um, where you can do it. Or if it's like what we did at, down at Willie's Pond where all the homeowners was like six lots on the road or five lots on the road and they had, all had water rights, so we each gave each a lot of slip. That's only, either way you can do it.
Okay. So you gotta, you gotta, you know, just revise it so that it's approvable.
Like a project.
Then it pulls back, it's, you know, it's much less, uh-
Obtrusive.
Yeah, it's, it's-
It's very comparable to the docks that you showed me on that survey that you gave me.
Yeah, I don't know what scale it is, so it, these, these look like they've just been old fixed docks. Because according to the survey, that there'd been a clubhouse there, so I guess-
Yeah, the clubhouse is-
You can see, see it says clubhouse just below the docks?
It's the, it's the old house where the Tuckahoe School owns.
I think that's where you can see the pipe. The, the water pipes are still in there, a little bit of the foundation.
Yeah, they moved it up there and then was actually, was a rowboat station there and a part of the golf course.
But that was decades ago.
Yes.
Many decades ago. Oh, no, no, the history's good.
You revise it to meet the blue book regulations of what the board consistently and customarily, this is outside of that, bring it back into that, back.
So-
Since it's one, since it's residential, it's not the one float.
Okay.
Then I'll meet blue book, should not, it'll be too much for all.
All right.
So the, this piece of land, so the access to Ram Island runs across it. So National owns up to the Ram Island driveway and then Ram Island owns the driveway and the piece to the south. So are you not considering a public hearing?
Well, if it meets the blue book and they're pulling it back from, it's like right now, it's looking like it's very large. Now you're, you're coming back to blue book standards, um-
With a six, one, no, six by twenty float.
That we already have had a public hearing on what our regulations are, what we customarily do and he's pulling it back to a six by twenty, um-
I think you said it's gonna be a foot path out of-
You're maintaining consistency with what we customarily do.
However, um, with our, our rules around public hearings, it states that there's not significant, it's been determined that the following projects do not raise a significant degree of public interest or public input. I, I think that, you know, given that there are many people that you- I think that, you know, given that there are many people that use this area and that trans, and that go in and out of this inlet, I think that there's public interest here.
Well, well, how is, is it gonna impede that anyway?
Yeah, I mean, I go out, I go out and up probably fifteen times a week.
Is it gonna impede this?
It's not gonna impede, but I think there will be public, public interest, and I think we need to give the public the opportunity to weigh in here.
How does that translate to consistency of what we generally do in, in any other application? Are we gonna trigger a public hearing on every single one of these structures throughout the entire township?
So, given that this is at the mouth of an inlet, given that this is
Not at the mouth.
It's just, it's just inside. It's just inside the mouth of an inlet, given that this abuts a private property that trans, that translates across it.
Do you, can you put up for us to look at the plans?
So you, I, you probably can get a letter from the two brothers with no objection to it.
Yeah.
That's no big deal.
And what about the people that use the bulkhead? And that use the area, use that rodent?
Bulkhead's private property, they own the bulkhead.
So I'm sorry, not the bulkhead, the rodent. The beach.
It's five hundred, six, five, six hundred feet away, the rodent and the beach.
Thank you, grassman, for straws there.
Um, I'm trying to look out for the residents of the town and others who use this area.
So let's look at this.
I don't see any problem with having a public hearing because I don't really see there being that big of a situation with the dock. It was a bigger situation when we approved the bulkhead there. That was a very contentious, uh, because people were fishing down there, working with the highway department, re-uh, restructuring that beach. I mean, having a public hearing, I understand what Anne is speaking about as far as user groups. I don't see them really coming forward and speaking negatively, but at least giving them the chance to, to come if they want to. I, I, I mean, it is, it would be, it would be a new dock in a, in a spot, there hasn't been a dock there since
That's what we do every day though.
And, but it's, it's a highly used area with recreational fishing, um, some commercial fishing. So I don't see a problem with having a public hearing. I think it would actually, you know, clean it up and make it, you know
You don't think it's gonna trigger a public hearing on every single dock that we work on throughout the entire township?
No.
No, because this is a, this, this has a lot of different user groups that I think might want to have some input in. And, and I know personally, putting a dock in that area might, uh, cause some hardship for some of the local baymen to go in there. You know, bait fishing, because that's a very productive area to go bait fishing. So if there's, you know, I mean, that's my personal knowledge of, and clamming, is it gonna interfere with anybody in there clamming? So, I mean, I'd like to have a little bit of input if the, those user groups want to come before us. And if they don't, we put the public hearing out, we can close it and we can adopt it.
You, you have to revise your plans before you can go anywhere because you're outside of spec.
Correct.
Right, so I think when you look at your plans, it's, it's quite far, but when you bring it back to what's an approvable Uh, project, it, it becomes much less
Okay.
Of an issue.
My son'll do it, I'll revise the plans, get them to you soon as possible.
Okay.
So
We don't set public hearings at this, at this stage?
No, we don't have, we don't have the material that until he has to revise plans.
Right.
And can you get like, see how the GIS map is there right now? Can you overlay the dock on that?
I could probably
So we can have a good concept of what you're proposing here?
I could do that.
Yeah. Right, James?
Back to your drawing board.
So you, so you, just to summarize, you want a new cover sheet and plan showing the six by twenty float? And bring it back to two and a half feet of water, as well as an aerial with the proposed dock on it.
And we'll look at it at that point in time, then the board will have another conversation, make the determination of how It looks and what makes the most sense, but we'll reserve that discussion until you at least provide, and, and, you know, a, a plan That's more commensurate with what is actually gonna be there, not what's there, not what you're showing now.
I think, I'm walking away at this, I think, with positive, positive outlook on it, so.
Okay.
So when we get that, then Bill will schedule it for the next work session that we receive that stuff and then
All right.
That's the most sensible way.
Yep, that's fine with me. Thank you.
All right, who's, who's up next?
Ed, somebody told me to give you that, you might want to make a quick read.
Okay. Oh, Beaver Dam.
Yeah.
Nice.
All right.
Thank you.
Yep, take care all.
Who's up next?
Thank you.
That's on hold, it's
Fourteen thirty-one?
Yep, fourteen thirty-one Meadow Lane, Village of South, Southampton.
Hello. Good morning, Steve Womansky.
How's Steve doing today?
On ground, it's my favorite, favorite spot.
That's a low bar.
Right?
We have an Asbilly permit request for a four by three stairs, a three by, I don't know, thirty by point seven foot walkway to four feet.
Basically, it was a permit issued and it was built slightly different than, and then we went for a CO and they told us that we had to go
Yes.
Get the official okey dokey, so.
Yes, we're looking to, uh
And I submitted some in, an updated Asbilly survey.
It's in a Doug Lagoon on the north side of Dune Road. There's at least one other dock that is currently in this Doug Lagoon. It has adequate water depth. It's pretty much, James, it's everything compliant that we need.
Could you just explain what the differences were? On the previous permit?
I think the original drawing that was approved by, that was done by Intersigns
Yeah.
Had a, um, um, like a few steps and then a walkway that was a little bit higher that prevented them to walk from one side of their property to the other, kind of Got in between, so they
Yes.
Just build it a little bit lower.
Oh, so you didn't have the steps for maintenance?
You don't have crossover steps and it goes from, you can walk down the middle.
Exactly.
So it allows, it allows for public access, pass and repass in that, in the areas of Doug Lagoon.
So you got better pass and repass?
Yeah, that was actually better than having steps there.
Yes, so
Just matching it up to, uh
So are you putting steps on the north side as well, I just
That's the north side, right there where the armpit cursor is.
Yeah.
And you come back up, and then when you come down, there's a, instead of going across at, at a level that would have been about, I guess, three feet or
Yeah.
That went straight across to, you can see the, the last bit of the steps that come down from the house.
Yes.
So we just, those, those were down, already down at the ground, um, so then we just put the walkway right at grade. So we didn't have to be, like, go up and down to go from one side to the other.
It's already built, so if you want to go look at it.
Right, and it's to the west of Road Day.
Right.
Yes.
And is there, um, there's an Asbilly fee that's being assessed to this?
I think we paid it.
Yes.
And so it's accessing then the, I, I'm just confused because what I'm looking at is There's significant wetlands that are on the north side of this Doug Canal and this
It's on the south and north side, but it's, it's a Doug Lagoon.
Right.
And it has a very little, uh, small, like, almost like a drain that goes out to the bay.
Right.
That you can navigate at high tide.
Right, so the portion of the walkway that's already built?
The southerly end is lowered down so you can pass and repass if you want to walk along that metal.
The plan view of the previous approved plans would look like that.
Okay.
The only difference is
It was a bridge from the house to the dock.
Right, and then it just got lowered to, for access left and right.
Okay.
So I'd like to move it forward.
All right, yeah.
The answer.
It's a good move.
Yep.
Thank you.
See you around the campus?
Yes.
Thank you, Steve.
Great, thanks guys.
And they are stamped, so we can advance.
Thank you.
Let's advance it then. Uh, Strong's Old Fort Marina LLC, seventy-four Little Nick Road, Shinakok Hills, and Consultants.
How are you all?
Good, good.
Did I misunderstand before, did you have an eleven o'clock meeting?
No, I think it was Jim Walker.
Okay, I thought I heard you say you did as well.
No, I joked that I would cover for Jim.
I'm sure he would greatly appreciate that.
He probably wouldn't mind if I did a good job.
True, got what he wanted.
He would. So, of course, I just brought up the wrong file too.
Jim took it.
You might have two files here, like one on top of the other? It's hard to tell.
No, I had a big, I had the big engineering plan on top of it. That's just kind of embarrassing.
These here?
I have it on the screen.
Rob, you want these?
Yeah, I'll just use that, but I am a little worried about what just happened to my file.
Uh-oh.
It seemed to be at my seat. But let me deal with this first. So, um, Probably the easy way to do this is the engineers depicted this kind of in three stages as an existing And then sort of a mid-construction and then a final construction. So
It's not gonna get much better though.
Yeah, you could, you can do it one at a time, James, if you just kind of zoom in on that, I can
That's where we are now, Jim.
Hold up the same thing here. So this is the same site that you all just looked at within the past couple of months for the maintenance work on the floating docks and the bulkhead. And James can, not just yet, but I'll ask James to pull up just a photo, um, so you can take a look at it. But basically, there's an existing concrete boat ramp which extends down to the seaward edge of this dashed area. And that's the area that they're proposing to fill, yeah. So that ramp starts there and then goes all the way down to the right
Seaward.
To seaward to where this line is drawn. And the basic concept here is that they're taking a old concrete boat ramp and turning it into a bulkheaded elevated boat launch.
So they can use a travel?
Correct.
You're not, you're not gonna use a trail?
It's, um
Go in and out of the water.
So they're, so the travel rails that are there are being removed also.
Yeah.
So this is basically just becomes a spot where they can hoist the boat directly down and jumping to part three, but You're forcing me to jump in.
When they remove that concrete slab and they make it up to grade
Correct.
They're gonna put, that's where they're gonna back up the boat and the travel to wash the bottom, so we
Well, to actually launch the boats. So there's gonna be a concrete, uh, launch pad constructed at the seaward end of this.
But you're gonna have to have some type of drainage in there because that's where they're gonna wash the bottoms when they take them out and
A containment vessel like they did at Hampton Watercraft.
Yeah, so they're gonna have to, you're gonna have to do that.
Okay.
Which is no big deal.
Okay. But pulling back a second, so the idea is that they're not filling any natural bottom. The only bottom that's being filled here is what's currently concrete. And that'll be demoed and removed to the maximum extent that they need to install the piles.
It's actually good because the water won't wash down and go into the water from the parking lot.
Correct. So this is, you know, this is how it looks. You wanna pull it, James, do you have a photo? I, I think I probably submitted photos with the application.
Of the launch?
Yeah, that's, that's a lot easier.
So just gonna raise the grade?
Correct.
And, and to change the angle so that it's flush?
So the water doesn't wash down in that one, for the ramps.
And those two rails that you see get removed.
Right.
And then this here becomes your new configuration. So the waterway that's to the side where the ramp is, I know if you can blow it up a little bit, you can see this old bulkhead. There's some space between the bulkhead and the travel rail that will continue to remain waterway Because again, the only area that's being filled is the existing concrete. And then in the final configuration, you'll have the launch pad here With the steel pad at the edge and then a ramp and float. And this is basically just for temporary servicing of the boat, so they'll go into the water and then they have a float that they get tied up to before launching.
Are they extending the pad at all, Rob?
They're not.
So they're just, it's basically as if it's getting like lifted upright in place?
Well, that's a good way to describe it, actually, if you just imagine being able to take the existing
Like a bridge.
Yeah, like a bridge, if, if that could lift up. And the idea of that was just for you and the DEC, for all the agencies, um, that there'd just be no naturally existing bottom. I mean, not that it's, uh, you know
Productive.
And estuary on display in there or anything, but the idea is that the bottom that's been historically developed with this concrete ramp Is the same exact area, no more, no less, that would be developed with this launch pad.
And you're removing the rails on both sides?
Right, so both those travel rails get removed. The bulkhead that you're looking at there on the right gets removed in place. I mean, it's a bulkhead, it's really, I mean, it's, it's basically like jetty construction. There's not gonna be any backfill on the wetland side of that. There's a private property on the other side. You can see where Jimmy's hovering, there's a bunch of extensive wetlands that go down there. So there's no fill or anything proposed to that, that's, that's
You just put a new one in right there.
It's just in, in kind, in place, except that it won't be CCA timber. And then the, and of course, there's some new bulkhead construction just because you have to create the, the new sections of bulkhead To form that space because that, once that's lifted, obviously, it has to be retained.
Would you have to put that bulkhead back into the north?
For here?
Yeah.
You know, you want to because that would keeps the boat from going over
Oh, definitely, yeah.
The wetlands.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Not, you know, throw it back in.
It's what, it's what actually forms the usable slip.
Yeah.
So it'd be like having any boat, it would be having like any boat basin or boat slip without a structured side.
And removing, it would change the whole wetland situation here because that, that wetlands would migrate or maybe dissipate somewhat From the removal of the bulkhead.
It wouldn't have the protection of that bulkhead, so that would, I mean, unrelated to this project, just with Anne's concern with the wetlands. The wetland would then be more exposed to potential erosion on that side.
Could you wind back that bulkhead a bit? Does it need to be, does it need to come the whole way?
Well, it matches the other side.
No, I understand.
It's a commercial establishment, so they're gonna have to retain what they need for it to
Protect the function.
And it is also, it's all on private bottom too, so it's not an extension added to the public waterway. The basin's actually contained within the parameters of the property lines.
Yeah, I think that you're gonna have to maintain consistency with that or you're gonna have problems.
And launching large boats there on a windy day, that bulkhead does break down the wave action
Yep.
Allow you to easily retrieve and put the boats in and out.
And you do have a thriving wetland.
You can see where the, on the other side is very shallow.
Yeah.
Where that bulkhead's saving it, saving the wetlands.
It's also dredged in there too and it keeps it deep, otherwise, if you remove that bulkhead, it would fill in and it would be a constant dredging, uh, the maintenance dredging.
And that's the other element to this too, is that they, they are gonna maintenance dredge inside the basin itself. So again, not out in the public waterway, but just strictly within the
On their own
On their own property.
Within the confines of a commercial marina, which is important for maintenance.
Yeah, this is basically the second phase of Strong's sort of modernizing and upgrading this, you know, historically established site. We talked a lot about the history during the last application process, so I don't want to go into all that again, but
Okay, you got it.
Same spot.
That will be muck that they'll be dredging, right, not sand?
It'll be a combination of sand and silt.
Where's it gonna go?
It's just gonna be retained for backfill behind the bulkhead.
Because I was gonna say, if there was possibility for it to go to the end of the road, either at Mill Pond or Far Pond?
Well, it's got a lot of organics in it, it's gonna be difficult to
Put it, put it where the launching ramp is gonna be.
Yeah, it's all, it's all slated, so
They got it all planned, you got it all planned.
So, so basically what the engineer is showing is that dredge material will be used as backfill for
Oh, to make the patch?
The in-place replacement of the bulkheads.
Okay.
And then there's clean sand and clean angular stone that's filled just to create a solid base underneath the, the launch itself. So that organic material probably won't be used as backfill below the, the new launch, but it will be used as backfill mixed with sand behind the bulkhead, you know, the upwind bulkhead side that's going to be replaced. I suspect they'll probably end up doing this work in connection with the bulkhead replacement that was covered on the other permit. I know they were, they were pretty anxious to get the, the permit for the floating docks. But I wouldn't be surprised if all the bulkheading work is basically done at the same time.
Once you get a contract to do it.
Yeah.
I cleaned it up a lot.
Make sure there isn't something I'm missing. No. So that's really it.
Well, it looks like a, a good plan, cleaning up the whole area. So removing some of the old treated lumber and crease out lumber that's there and bring new non-treated vinyl, which is good.
So what's our next step?
Advance it. Yeah, and you have an easier engineer stand plans.
Yeah.
If you find them.
We have our copy. I have my copy.
Rob just can't find his copy.
He'll find it, he'll find it.
I'm sure it's sitting right there for some reason.
Maybe it's in the car. Billy went and looked.
Thanks, Billy.
Advance it.
Maybe Billy took it.
He's going to do your project now.
Billy only has some skinny files.
Are you able to do Beretta and then cut me loose, or do I need to go back to my workstation?
What do you want to do?
I have just, Bill has Beretta on for, for final advancement.
Tony Beretta?
Not Tony. It was one you had, you had approved the plans and the application basically in, in the concept, it just needed the engineer's stand plans.
That's a different section. Do we have what we need?
Yeah.
I can pull it up quickly if you...
We have what we need. We probably don't need you.
Then you don't need me to stay.
No, you don't need...
It was just, it was just a stamped version of what you'd already okayed.
As long as you've provided what we requested and we see that, you don't have to speak to it.
There were no, there were no outstanding substantive issues. It was just you needed the stamped plans.
You don't go look for your, your other plans.
Yes, we don't want you to lose anything else.
I'll be sure to keep you updated.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Bye, Earl.
We're good for that.
Okay.
All right.
So you want to advance that one while we're on?
Well, yeah, if you want to be, yeah, that's fine.
Paul Waxler, 33 Common Point Drive, Envire Permits, Inc.
Hello again.
Good afternoon, morning, whatever it is, almost afternoon.
Almost, not quite.
We're here to look at, to remove the, to move the termus end of the existing town and DEC-approved seasonal pier boat lift structure to within 15 feet of the riparian rights property line, riparian rights property line determined by Keith M. Wochuk, Lance Cervellius.
Yes.
Clay, want to give us a little overview of what's going on here and why we're...
Talking about riparian rights.
Talking about riparian rights and...
Riparian rights is the joint property line of any, any two property owners in the state of New York. It is covered under the New York State Regulations and Field and Streams. There's five ways of determining it, and four of them are attributed to freshwater streams and rivers, and one is attributed to saltwater environments and docks and piers and, and the saltwaters of the state of New York. The easiest way to re, to describe a riparian rights is if you, if you lived on a canal and at the end of the canal was one house and two houses were on either side. Each homeowner has a projected property line, and that would go straight off his property line. So the question comes up, who has the right to put their boat at that point? I mean, it's not directly this, but I want to discuss what riparian rights does. So you have two, two property owners, each of them, each of them claim to have the full use of their bulkhead, but they don't. They have 45, there's a, there's a, you take the 90, divide it in 45, and you have the riparian rights property line. In this situation, you have two homeowners that come up this way, and you want it, you know, you want to know where each property owner has the right to put that, that boat. So that's what it comes out to. So...
You want to... So basically, right now, there's currently a, a dock there. It's...
Yes, there's a seasonal aluminum pier, I call it a pier, that projects out from the shoreline. That's been there for a number of years and a number of DEC permits and a number of town permits. And as the, as the, as the siltation from the adjoining properties moves to the left, it becomes, the present position become, of the boat, it becomes nonusable.
So you want to swing, you want to reangle this structure then so that it goes more towards the northwest, right? So the, the present, the proposed structure is the one that's more towards the top of the screen, and the present structure is the one that goes straight out? Is that what I'm understanding?
Correct, correct.
Now, that's, I don't know, that's going against the extended property lines.
Yeah, that's over the blue book.
That's within 10 feet.
It's over.
So it looks like it's over.
In front of the other property.
So how's that going to work?
I don't...
So it's in, it's in front of and within.
We have. All right. Which you have a copy of the, the larger one, if you need it, without anything on it. This shows the riparian rights of all the property owners that are in that area.
No, but we set the guidelines in terms of where on our bay bottom it is that we cite docks, right? We've been doing this forever, right?
You have to be 10 feet off of your extended property line, which is not shown on here.
It's 10 feet off of the riparian property line, which gives each homeowner equal use of that piece of property that, that is, you have jurisdiction over. So it's not all...
I don't think this is a...
You're confusing us.
Right, right. Let's, let's stick to, let's stick to blue book.
The reason you want to move it because it's getting too shallow over there. You want to swing it around. So stay with that. Forget about all the other stuff because you got enough room on, you, you're 15 feet away from it.
No, it's not. Well, he, this, this is, this is not correct.
Over the extended property line.
Extended property line should go straight.
So you're going to have to move it over.
See it? See the way it angles?
Yeah.
The original dock was 10 feet or 15 feet off.
It's 10 feet off...
Extended property line.
The property line.
What's the pier line here?
135 feet.
What's the length of this dock as it stands now?
Currently?
Yeah.
It's like 150 feet.
We gotta, we gotta...
You got to focus on it. It's shallow, that's why you got to move it.
Yeah, we have to focus on our blue book regulations and what's going on here.
So that's what I was trying to do. I was trying to say, if you can extend it.
To, to achieve it, but then that's not within your blue book.
Yeah, it's beyond...
So it, it doesn't work with pier line?
And so, so the plan, this plan doesn't work because it's the extended property line issue, and then the other plan doesn't work.
It does work if you go by the state law.
We go by the blue book. We go by the blue, we go by our regulations on where we cite things on our bottom, and we need to maintain consistency. The state, as we talked about with the elevation agreements that they allow is different than what we do locally. The state also has to take into consideration that the property that they're on is the trustee's property, so we like to have a say in where these things go.
Of course.
So we need to take a harder look at this, other than just, you know, painting with some brush of, of some, some rights that are violating principles that the trustees have held in, in the blue book regulations. So we need to take a harder look at. And in the past, we've had to increase pier lines, you know, have public hearings, and increased pier lines where, you know, things have changed and it wasn't working out.
In site-specific areas.
Correct, correct.
We're glad to do that.
Right. So we, we have to take a harder look at this overall, this whole area overall as things are changing here.
James, can you...
It changes within weeks. It is unbelievable.
Again?
If you've been down there, it, it is filling in at such a rate, it's like inches per week.
Well, I think there's a small stream that transects this little peninsula, right? It goes the whole way across.
Yes, there is.
So I think that's what we're looking at, and that stream feeds, feeds the pond. That's a really healthy ecosystem on that point. And if we need to look at an increase in pier line, perhaps we need to do that for this property, given that stream's presence.
Yeah, because we can't be violating the other principles of the consistency that we've, we've tried, we've maintained in the blue book. We got to take a little bit more of a holistic look, to your point, based on the site specifics.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at the property prior to the storm that we had around Christmas time, there was multiple issues with sand being deposited here.
Right.
The property to the west, the limb property, which had a bluff, was compromised with, there was a stone that was there, was compromised with the wave energy and the tidal surge. And all that material has been pulled into the bay.
Yes.
And, and Common Point, as it was back in the 50s and 60s, was much longer and narrower. Now it's shorter and stouter, and the material is moving out. I, I would opt for a public hearing extending the property line, I'm extending the pier line over this riparian rights because the riparian rights are the, our rules and regulations is the extended property line.
Right.
And we've, you know, 17 years on the board, and that's how we've done, done business here, as far as 10 feet off the extended property line.
Okay.
These riparian rights are, could get really controversial if the applicant and, if the person next door is having an application to put a dock in, and there's another dock on a property further down, it's going to be basically putting three docks in like a, a teacup, and they're all going to go into each other. And it's, I'd rather stick with this dock extended out to the north instead of going to the north and northwest with, with the projected property line, riparian rights.
James, can you just draw back a little bit? So there is a property with the dock just to the west.
Yes.
Do we need to look at both these structures?
Probably should.
Because like I'm looking...
I think he has not bought it.
There's seasonal docks, both of them.
Right.
Yeah.
But you should probably look at the whole area if, if it's changing so rapidly and it's changed so much, it probably from, just like we looked at sections...
We do have a, a, an application before us for a dock in between these two docks. That's why I'm bringing this up.
You approved that one, I believe, right?
No, we were in the process of reviewing it. There were some questions that we didn't get cleared up at the last hearing, so we asked them to get the material and bring it back.
We should look at this whole area then.
Yes.
What we did in Bay Point was to look at specific tax map numbers, I think, right, James?
Yeah, I don't think you're going to use the whole area because it's only this corner here that's...
Yeah, just the affected properties.
Yeah, like probably three or four properties, right, in that sort of cove.
If you move out further, you could see the other docks. And when you move west, the pier line is still 135 feet, but that does accommodate docks. And this area, because of the erosion and accretion into the bay, it's, they're, they're losing their ability to utilize their docks, so...
So let's set a pier line that makes sense based on the current conditions that are going on right now.
For those, I would say...
For that section.
Well, I would say between this property and...
This one?
The three properties here.
We did similar in West Hampton, didn't we?
Yeah.
Hey, Ed, we also might want to discuss and have one common dock for, for three boats or three lifts.
Not necessarily.
I know, it's a tough...
Yeah, no, I think that, that...
The residents...
It's a tough area since Claire moved.
Some of the residents, some of the residents don't quite get along here.
I think it's, I think it's a pier, I think it's a public hearing and a sensible pier line adjustment, like has been done in other areas of the, of the town, so that it's done the right way. We don't have the violations of the extended property lines, and there's, there's rhyme and reason to the situation.
So Clay, I think if, to have you do a little bit more further research, is to take the mean high watermark and go out to a point where there's like, it, it, it gets deep pretty quickly, so like four feet of water, and then we'll figure out the distance of that on these, on these couple of properties here. And then I'd rather be, have the dock longer now because I know the environment's going to keep filling in, filling and filling in. So if we do a longer, do a longer pier line...
We'll get more time.
We'll get, but we'll put the dock in closer where it, where it conforms to our rules and regulations.
Right.
But eventually, if it needs to be moved out, it'll be just an amendment to the permit. Would that be a good way to go with it?
I think so, right.
Rather than build it so long?
Yeah, initially.
Okay.
So back to the drawing board on this because it's going to require a public hearing.
So I would, I would need...
No, I already know where it is. I know where, where it's got to go.
So I would need you to give me some water depths there.
Yeah.
So, and then we would...
Now, do you need them by a surveyor or...
Yes.
Yes.
We need a social hydrographic.
Yeah.
And we need them for significant length of shoreline.
Yeah.
And we'll have, you may already have them.
Okay. Well, I mean, would we do from like...
So the subject property, so 1, 2, 3, 4 to the...
Yeah, four properties.
Four properties to the northwest.
I would do one more over because that, that might get, as the time goes, that's going to get, it's going to go more to the...
I mean, you can...
So, so four, so including...
I do one, one more property over.
No, no, I said four.
So you want which four properties? The one with the two piers on either side?
Yeah, why don't we, why don't we start, it used to be Hidden Cove, the little housing area there. I'll sit with James.
Give me the property names.
Give the property names and tax map numbers.
Good.
And then we'll segregate it out because there's, there's a seasonal dock, then there's a permanent dock, and then there's another permanent dock, and then there's a vacant property, and then there's another dock. Yeah, so, so I'll, I'll come up with the area that needs to be looked at and have the bathymetric surveys done.
Okay, and when, when would I, when would this public hearing be scheduled?
It depends on when you get the bathymetry.
We couldn't even really give you, we couldn't really even give you a time right this second. It's too preliminary here.
Yeah.
Too preliminary to give you a time.
So there's two and then, then the public...
Get, get the information back. We'll work up a schematic, so I'll get it back to you. And then you can present that to us at our next work session. And at that point, if we have all the information for the public hearing, we could schedule the public hearing for, for the next meeting after that.
Right. Do you need to stamp plans by that hearing?
Well, no, no.
Okay.
No. No, because things could get adjusted, so...
We just need the bathymetry.
All right.
Until the, you know, the very end, that way...
I'm trying to give the most longevity out of this, you know...
Well, that's for the whole area, though. That way we don't solve one problem, create another problem, and then, you know, let's see. We've done this in the past, you know?
Yep.
All right, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
And ladies.
Scott, Tom Kramer has a request. He's got a doctor's appointment.
Okay, come on up.
He's asking if he can...
Which one is this?
This is 46 Basketman, under Parish.
Okay. I appreciate you taking me.
Of course, no worries. We're sorry we were delayed with our second session.
Get you on your way, get you on your way.
Thank you very much. This is a fairly straightforward one. Well, my name is Thomas Kramer, Principal of firm of Kramer Consulting Group, office 54 North Country Road in Miller Place.
James, can you blow that up a little? Thank you.
Just received a notice of noncompliance on January 5th, 2023.
Yeah, so the notice of noncompliance was for a 4 by 16 or 4 by 18 foot deck that got redecked without a permit. And then the vegetation wasn't planted, which has now been planted, according to the agent. And then what was the other thing?
20, 20-foot east timber return was not built.
Right. So they tied it into the bulkhead. So they tied it into the bulkhead instead of doing the return. So really, the only thing for this modification is to allow the decking.
To legalize the decking?
Legalize the decking and to remove the.
Return.
The return from the permit.
Is it non-treated material that was used? What was used on the deck?
It was vinyl for some treated, yes.
Is it through flow? Do, is it through flow that was used on it?
No, it's just regular decking.
Timber tech or whatever it is?
Timber tech, yeah.
You have a picture of it?
And do you have a picture of the plantings too that were done?
I don't have, I don't think we, at the time when I submitted, they didn't have the plantings done.
Right, you just emailed us and said that was done.
Right.
George did not go out to check if the plantings were done, he was waiting for the modification to be approved before he.
That was, the plantings were required under the original permit.
Mm-hmm, yes.
And so the plantings were done in March, I believe, prior to the expiration of the permit.
Right.
She thought that, once the bulkhead was done, she thought that she was through the project, so it was her mistake.
But we have no, will George go back out then again?
He will, he will back out to.
Okay, okay. So he'll confirm, he'll confirm.
He'll confirm the plantings, yeah, so that's what he'll go out for.
Okay.
Now, he put on there, Mr. Kramer maybe can advise us on it, but he, he put on the four by eighteen foot walkway, and you put on your application for the four by sixteen foot. So I was just wondering who the.
I took that off the survey.
George made a typo.
Yeah.
George said four by eighteen?
Yeah, he knows the noncompliance, he says four by eighteen.
Because on the cover sheet it says four by sixteen, what did the plan say?
Plans say four by eighteen, because that matches the sixteen five.
Sixteen five?
Yeah. Existing deck, which was scaled off because the survey didn't have it on it.
Just one and a half off here, is that a couple of feet off? So, yeah, I guess as long as we can confirm with George that it was sixteen five, not.
Yeah, the survey didn't have the size of the deck on it, and it was scaled off of the.
So it's actually smaller than what it's supposed to be?
According to, yes.
We just need to confirm that then, to see what the actual size is, yeah. So the planting and the actual size of the.
Planting's been done, I'm told, we just need to get photographs of it.
Right, just confirmation.
So, just good to advance?
Just one request is the, the application itself has a lot of wording, explanation of why they did stuff, all, you know, I think that all we really need is the, the size of the deck.
The details.
That's exact, which is sixteen five, to, you know, to legalize the redecking of this four by sixteen, the removal of the return, whatever size return it was, and that's, that's all we really need for the modification.
Just noted, yeah.
So all the rest of it can be taken off that cover sheet, so it's not confusing.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is that okay, Tom?
Yeah, that's fine. So we good to advance?
We're good to advance.
Okay. Okay, Ken, thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you. Who's up next?
Is it you?
Yes.
You got three tenies.
Three tenies, Spontoc Highway.
Yeah, Juneau.
Shepherd Engineering.
Hi, Ed.
Good, how are you?
Good. Sign in on this, correct?
State your name for the record, sign in.
My name's Gabriel Gomano, Shepherd Engineering. We're doing the ASBIL for three tenies Spontoc Highway. The homeowner was under the impression that the bulkhead was falling apart, and for repairs or modifications, small modifications, we didn't, he didn't need a permit. He did all the work, and we were retained to go in and just kind of expect it, make sure it all actually works. He did match the vinyl sheathing of the neighbor, of his neighbor, and then all, and still kept the fifteen foot buffer that was in the original survey or previously permitted.
Originally, this bulkhead was put in without a permit.
Correct.
It came to light during a storm that it got ripped out. So I'm assuming that you guys engineered a better bulkhead, this is pictures of the bulkhead after the storm. What happened to it? So I'm hoping that it's a better engineered bulkhead this time than it was previous.
We got stamped engineered plans, right?
Correct.
Yes.
Right, you sign in for the record?
Yeah, I was on my stand while I was looking at them.
Okay, so we have, we have stamped plans by an engineer, so.
Yeah, that's Mark Shepherd.
Right, so this should be.
The only one question.
This has no permit originally, Ed?
No, the, the original bulkhead was permitted.
Okay.
They put the, the bulkhead in, in, in front of it without a permit. During the storm of December, it got blown out.
Wow.
So now they've redid it again without a permit, and they're coming in for an ASBIL permit. My only one question for you is that on the survey that you provided us, it does not deplicate Shinnecock Beach Road, which is on the survey, I don't know if you have another survey, but on all the surveys along this, from Crab Road, three hundred feet west of Crab Road to Far Pond, all the surveys we've asked to have the Shinnecock Beach Road shown on it.
Okay.
So that would be something that's important.
Got it.
Yes.
So, is it a survey or that we generally?
Yes, the survey is, deplics the Shinnecock Beach Road, and they've given us a survey here.
They've done this, who did this, these folks?
Meets and bounds survey, and it was, had gotten the origin map of the amended map A of the Wesley part of Shinnecock Hills, so that should have.
All right, so we'll have to send you, let's hold this until they provide the proper survey, the proper rotations on it.
It's a float, it's a float.
You can handle that, right?
Yeah.
Yes, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, it's.
So that's, put that on your list, you're gonna, you're gonna need to get that, because the survey.
Provide the survey to show Shinnecock Bay Road.
Shinnecock Beach Road.
Beach Road.
On the, yep.
Depicted appropriately on the survey.
Yep, and everything else, the buffer and everything else, and the stone is everything, everything is good that we would ask, so I'm going to hold that until we receive that part of the, called the survey.
Okay, we'll do, and then after this.
Well, there, see, there is another, there's an.
Older survey, correct?
Yeah, that shows it.
But we need the one that's going with this project, though, right? They, they need to, they should have probably.
The latest, yeah.
Who did this one?
Whoa.
That's a different.
Yeah, no, I'm just showing you that there, there is a.
Right.
But that one doesn't have. Reputed road line, and it's right very clearly on the survey.
From another survey, so just have this survey or update that.
That meets and bounds update.
Yeah, because that local, he probably did not use a local survey, so he had no idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's a little bit out west, but yes.
All right, so you handle that.
Got it.
Get it over to James, and then we'll, we'll take it from there, because you can't, yeah, we can't advance this one until we have that.
Okay, and then we come back for another hearing, correct?
Once you have that in, then who's is this?
We look at it, make sure we have all the proper paperwork, and then we.
Trusty Warner.
Yeah.
Trusty Warner will facilitate.
Yep.
But get that to James as soon as you can get that from the survey.
Okay, we'll do. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, Sunset Point Enterprises LLC, 130 Point Me Cox Lane, Bridgehampton, First Coastal, Philly. This is for a. To modify, oh, do you want to talk about it?
No, I was just introducing Billy Mack, First Coastal, me for you.
Oh, this is to, for a change. It's to change thirty by four foot catwalk to a hundred by four foot catwalk and to remove an existing timber walk. The catwalk will, will be elevated three and a half feet above grade with treated materials and open grate decking for the catwalk and stair treads. So this project was originally approved with an existing timber pa, walkway that was on grade, now coming back for the elevation, but the elevation will go over the Conservation Board jurisdiction, so we requested an advisory letter, and the May 2nd Environment Division field inspection for the proposed catwalk revealed that both state and town regulated wetlands and adjacent Swan Creek shorelands have been cleared and modified by soil slash loam deposition for the purposes of establishing lawn. The affected areas are encumbered by a covenanted naturally vegetated wetland non-disturbance, non-fertilizing buffer, the entirety of which has been largely destroyed. Accordingly, Sunset Point Enterprises' plans dated February 15th last, 2022, last revised January 20th, 2023, are not reflective of current site conditions, and a administrative wetlands permit application has been separately filed with the town on March 17th, 2023, in order to manage existing fragmities. However, the permitting of such activities is not being entertained as the application and plans need to be modified to call for full reclamation of the pre-existing natural terrain and vegetated cover. In light of the above, any permitting of the proposed catwalk and dock should be held in abeyance until the affected shorelands have been fully restored.
And you say?
And I say yes, we are in the process of submitting a restoration plan for the property. I believe it's a new property owner, wasn't aware, or somebody wasn't aware of something, so they're bringing it up to speed with respect to restoring, and then we'll come back and.
Right, so let's hold this until we get to where it all works for everybody that way. Yeah, because otherwise it's.
Doesn't make sense.
It's not going to, right.
Yep, yep.
As long as you're on it and you.
Totally.
Okay?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thanks, Mr. Mack.
Thank you guys very much. One more?
Okay, do you have another one?
Mr. Parrish?
Oh.
I do.
400 Dune Road.
Sorry, Lisa, you're next.
Oh, 400 Dune Road, yep. Okay. This is a pre-existing bulkhead, and I'll file.
Reconstruct in place approximately 144 feet of existing bulkhead. Increase top elevation of the bulkhead to L six point three feet, in parentheses, N A V D eighty-eight. No treated wood to be used, place approximately sixty cubic yards of clean sand and pebbles within ten foot landward of the bulkhead.
Yeah.
The plan shows the existing elevation at three point five feet, and you want to raise it to six point five.
So this, yeah.
Thirty-six inches.
So just, so just for the record.
Yeah.
If you pull up the aerial, this is the property that is the bulkheaded portion to the west, excuse me, to the east.
How are you saying?
Of the living shorelines, isn't it, Billy? Or is it, no, I'm wrong, I'm wrong, sorry.
Eighteen inches.
I'm wrong.
Different area.
I'm, I'm wrong about the location, and what's, what did you say about eighteen inches?
I was just confirming with Andrew in my office, the requested raise of the bulkhead should note eighteen inches, not whatever was depicted in the plan, or the description of the plan.
We plan, let's make a deal, starting with a gigantic number.
Well. It wants eighteen inches, so you can start with three feet.
That's what we said when we came in.
No, and there was this whole thing that shows that this, this particular property gets flooded quite often. The owner pushed us to do that, and.
What, thirty-six?
Yeah, so we're realizing that that's not very realistic, and we're willing to do it.
Right, yeah, I mean, we're, we're, yeah, what do you want to do, Trusty Parrish?
Nine inches.
This is a property, this is a bulkheaded property that has properties to either side that do not have any bulkheads. There is some revetment, I believe, to the west as well as to the east, Billy?
Right.
Is there, is there revetment on the toe of that?
On the west side, there's a permitted stone revetment.
Right.
For several.
On the east side, they have something there, it's noted on a survey as a, as a little elevated curve, it looks like it wants to be a bulkhead, but I don't think it is.
Yes. Why is it so?
Yeah, you can see it says, well, no, it's not even shown on this, this particular survey, on the property survey to the east, there is a structure there, and I'm not exactly sure what it is. That area is very beachy and doesn't get inundated, this property is, it's one of the old properties and.
Will you and James get to look at this one? You get to look at this one?
No, we haven't been out there.
I think that, based on what's going on.
Yeah, let's see.
You're gonna have to get over there.
This is one of the guys who ran the coffee.
No, but it looks like it wants to, right?
Right, for sure. There's a big sand platform there.
Yeah, yep. Yeah, so you can see on that eastern side, see that edge? Yeah, so there is something there, I don't know what it is.
Right, we, we need to know, so I think, let's hold this, and let's get like a time coordinated between Trusty Parrish.
Yeah, I'd like me to meet you on site.
Environmental Analyst, Mr. Durie, and let's get some better intel before we move, spin our wheels around.
James, draw back a little bit, there's a point to the east here.
Yeah.
And then a point to the west as well.
Yes, in a cove.
The bulk, the, all those properties to the west are pretty much bulkheaded the whole way around on the bayside, but to the east, there's a fair amount of sediment movement, I would imagine.
That's accreting there, so it's interesting that from, you know, that, this applicant's property here to the east, those properties are actually gaining when they're losing on the other side, so the sand is all shifting to that side of the cove.
All right, so you'll, you'll coordinate, yeah, good, hold it.
I think that's it.
That's it for you, but we still have.
Thank you.
Person waiting patiently for their turn.
Thank you.
Back.
Four minutes here.
Twin Fork permits with 97 Cobial Road.
Ninety-seven Cobial Road.
You're gonna sleep great tonight, Lisa.
Hanging out with us all day, okay. This is.
At least you still have hair.
This is.
Where's all the dogs?
This is a project with an in-kind, in-place replacement of existing bulkhead along Me Cox Bay at 97 Cobial Road, so it's 203 linear feet of bulkhead that will be replaced with vinyl pile, tropical hardwood timber whale, green heart timber piles, all untreated, with a buffer that will be native vegetation that will not be mowed or irrigated after the third season. This is right on Me Cox Bay, Lisa maybe you want to speak a little bit? This is right on Me Cox Bay, Lisa maybe you want to speak a little bit?
Lisa Poyer with Twin Forks Permits, on behalf of the applicant, this is a, I think a straightforward application where it's an in-kind, in-place replacement of the existing bulkhead, it's in the middle of about fifteen hundred linear feet of other bulkheads along that eastern-facing.
Can you show a picture?
Me Cox Bay area, it's at the terminus of Cabile Road.
The house is across the street.
Oh, they're significant. And we're replacing it with vinyl bulkhead with non-treated other wooden materials to help support the bulkhead.
At present, there's lawn right up to the edge of the bulkhead, so this will be.
Actually, a narrow strip of beech grass there right now, and we're proposing to do a five-foot buffer there.
Ten. Ten is what our regulations call for?
Go back to client.
So.
We have enough lawn there, come on.
So ten feet is what.
The condition will be?
Yes.
Yeah, they always look for ten, and if there's some boating use, or, you know, they can just, you know, use, use good judgment there, you, you know.
Yep, do we need a planning plan for this, or?
It'll just be beech grass.
Cape American beech.
Are you gonna?
One foot on center, plugs.
Plugs.
So you'll, you'll amend your cover sheet and your plans depicting as such, or you need to speak to your?
I will speak with the client first, and then I'll get back to you.
So you want us to hold this?
You can move it forward based upon that condition.
What do you think, James?
I will resubmit plans as.
Yeah, plans showing a ten-foot buffer.
It would be nice to have some, some nice grass.
We need a cover sheet too.
Yeah, matching cover sheet and plans.
That says.
You're gonna need stamped plans too.
And you have one question about the, the proposed buffer zone will be native vegetation, which will not be mowed or irrigated after the third season? Does that mean they're mowing before the third season?
No, that's what was, I was asking.
It's just the irrigation is the third season.
Right, just to make sure it thrives and gets.
Oh, I see, it won't be mowed ever, is that not clear?
Cape American beech grass.
It's never mowed.
We're gonna be sending a mowing inspector.
So it's just the irrigation portion is, you have to irrigate it initially, but then.
I was asking that into the cover sheet.
Yep, and I appreciate that.
But you'll be able to provide what's Blue Book compliant by the next meeting, unless your client rejects, but you'll advise them there's Blue Book compliance, right, so.
There, we have no latitude.
That's fine.
It's, it's, you know.
I had to ask.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
And we have to follow our words.
We're good here? All right, so.
Plans are stamped, so the new plans will be stamped as well?
Right.
So you'll advance it?
Cover sheet.
Revised cover sheet and revised plans, that will be stamped.
Correct.
Restamped, new plans.
I'm fine with that.
That's okay with you?
Okay, you guys.
Yeah, it's good, it's good, it's good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
Thank you.
Now, onto the emotional rescue.
It's, Joe, it's advanced, because they have stamp, but.
Yeah, we're advancing.
Before we put it on for that meeting, we'll take a look at it, make sure that it's.
Yes, it's minor, which is. Onto the.
Guys very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Good day, Bill.
We're onto the Emotional Rescue LLC, fourteen Neomog Lane, Village of Quad, for stamp plan determination, do we have it, Mr. Durier?
One second, let me just pull it up and confirm.
Mark, you're awfully quiet down there.
We do have a stamp.
I didn't hear him come back in.
We're good?
We're good.
Stamp plans, okay, so advance that. All right, we already discussed Beretta. You got Rogal in, ten-lan, send lane, Takahou? Stamp. Good?
Yep.
Trusty Pell, you good?
I'm good.
Okay. Brian O'Donoghue, seventeen Cormoran Drive, Hampton Bays. So Trusty Warner?
You got him?
Stamped.
Good.
All matching, James?
Yes.
Okay, good to advance. You got fifty-three Far Pond, Theodore Clysis.
Clysis. That was in my box today, so I think we should have it. You good? Yes.
Thank you, James.
And you've got, Trusty Parish has Christopher Jones, nine sixteen Flanders Road, represented by Jeff Patanjow.
Stamped.
It moved to advance it.
Okay, so that'll advance.
Now, maybe I missed it, but the intersignance one, are you guys holding it because you left, or?
We checked your science.
Three seventy-three Millstone Brook.
You're gonna hold that one.
You're gonna hold that one?
Yeah, that's on hold.
Do it next week, two weeks.
Now, we had exec session already, does anybody have a need for further, for further discussion? Okay. So, at this point in time, you okay, James?
Yes.
I will make a motion.
I have to, one real quick thing. The owner at adjoining Crab Road on the western side, the Walshes have asked to cut down one of the trees that are there, I was there last week looking at it, it's three-quarters rotten, it had been trimmed because it had some electrical wires, so they were looking for permission from us to allow our contractor to come down and take the tree down. It needs to be done because it's all, it's all wrapped in the electrical wires, it's a maple tree, and if it grows back like it had previously, it'll rip it down.
And it's in bad shape?
It's in real bad shape, it's half, I mean, it's rotten, it's gonna fall apart.
I have no trouble, Mark.
Long as they have life insurance.
Yeah, they're just looking to go across the trustee's easement, is that? Yeah, they're, they, they get access to their house off of Crab Road, there's two houses, and it's on the, house on the west side, and it's right next to their fence and in the electrical wires. You could do a letter of permission and hold harmless if you wish, that's up to the trustee's discretion.
You think it's, rises to that level?
No, I, I would just give them, say to go cut it, get a, get a insured tree person, get us the name of the person, and make sure that we're secondarily insured or whatever. Yeah. On that. It's up to trustee.
Okay.
As long as they have the liability insurance.
As long as they have insurance, okay.
All right, Mark, you can handle that.
Okay, I will take care of it.
What else do you folks have before we go into, you need exec session, correct? More exec session, Anne?
Yes, please.
Okay. All right, so I'd like to thank everybody for their participation today, it's been a.
Before you close, when, or when you go into the next exec session, just your, the purpose of the next exec session, you want to state.
Is this a litigation or personnel issue, Anne?
Okay.
Contract? Oh, contract?
Yes.
Legal advice, contracts?
Yes.
Okay, so make the motion for what it is, and.
It's for contract, let's go into executive session, please, for purposes of contract.
Okay, so well, second, motion to adjourn this meeting, is there anybody on Zoom that's?